Ordnance, appeal of public here agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must clear state both your name and your address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that you would like to speak concerning must be pertinent to City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the clerk's office will not be allowed to address the council on that Tuesday. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the councils. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, we ask that there be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to myself, who serves as chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain the quorum, there will be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. I think these are the rules of the council, and we thank you for your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of February 5th.
Some move.
Second.
Probably motion to second, any discussion? If not, let's vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved.
Communications from the mayor's office.
Nothing here, thank you.
Adoption of the agenda?
Some move.
Second.
But probably moved in second, that we would move forward with the agenda, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Thank you.
If I could make a statement from here to have two people come to the podium to address council, one from Adoption Rocks and one from the Mitchell Cancer Institute about an event that is coming up, they'll give you all of the particulars about it, and again, if they will come up to our podium to present their information to council and introduce themselves, please.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us. I'm Hallie, Hallie Coombe, I'm with the USA Health Mitchell Cancer Institute, and this is my friend Jerry Weber, who is with Adoption Rocks, and we thank you for having us. We are here to talk to you about such a special event, it's called Touch a Truck, and we're in our third year this year, and if you've not experienced Touch a Truck, it's one of the, it really is a very, very special day and a special time. This year, it will be held March 16th at Hank Aaron Stadium from 10:00 to 2:00. Touch a Truck is, its goal and its purpose is to engage our children in our community with our law enforcement, with our first responders, and to give a positive and respectful atmosphere for our children and families to have that engagement. It also helps us raise funds for the Mitchell Cancer Institute for pediatric cancer research. Dr. Erin On is one of our physicians, which is making Mitchell Cancer Institute a standout and a health leader among the Gulf Coast and in the cancer world. She has found her research, a particular mutation that contributed to pediatric leukemia and also has a contribution to glioblastoma. And if you know about glioblastoma, it's a very deadly form of brain cancer. So, this is but one of the things that Touch a Truck, the proceeds will benefit. The other is Adoption Rocks. This is a service which is provided to women who are pregnant and trying to make decisions about adoption, and it's a very loving and encouraging atmosphere that helps women make wise decisions when they're faced with them. So, this certainly is an extremely valuable community service agency. So, Touch a Truck, over its two years, has already seen 2,000 visitors. It is a very family-friendly event. We have raised $34,000, and we usually have about 40 trucks on display. So, they range from bulldozers to fire trucks, specialty construction. It's really just, and if you were a little boy or a little girl who has ever played with trucks, just to see them live and big is fascinating. So, it's a very, very fun event for children. One of the things that makes this event particularly special, which we love, is we have a noise-free hour for children with special needs. So, there are no horns, there are no lights, there are no signs. So, this is a very special hour where families who have children who can't be surrounded by that do have a chance to explore and enjoy the event as well. So, that is, that's Touch a Truck in a nutshell. We do have a folder which is filled with a lot of information. There's photographs, there's sponsorship information, there's ticket information, there's a letter. So, one of the things we'd like, we'd like urge you to do a few things. Number one, please share this event with your district. There isn't a family in your district who wouldn't love to bring their little one out now. Then, also, attend, come and join us, and bring your families out. I think that you will see great event it is for our community. And then finally, really would like for you to pay attention to the sponsorship information. It's not a very expensive event to sponsor, and it's something that goes directly back to two local agencies that are working to help build this community. So, those are the three things we would like to ask of you. We want to say thank you to a few of our sponsors already, which is Fox Town, the Kareeb Resort is our presenting sponsor, and Councilwoman Best Rich is also supporting our efforts. So, we want to say thank you to you as well. So, here are your folders.
If you'll give that to the clerk.
Right. That'd be great. Thank you. I would just like to also add that as impressive as all the equipment is, from the city, from the county, and from the private sector, the individuals who accompany this equipment are incredible, from the police to the gentleman who have the garbage carts and the women who drive trucks. I think it's wonderful when little girls, women, truck drivers, and they are truly the stars. As much fun as it is to see the equipment, the people and the engagement between the children and these operators is terrific, and I'd love for you to come see this.
And if I could add, I've been the last two times to the event, and it truly is awe-inspiring for these kids to actually get and climb into the vehicles, and the ones that can tolerate the noise, turn on the sirens, turn on the lights, and work with personnel that are up there. You get long lines behind some of that equipment, and it truly is, you can see it in the children's eyes. And again, the best part is the fundraising that is going on, but it is an event for children, specifically for children, and it caters to them, and I really hope that you will come out, that my colleagues will also help sponsor this very public and open event to the community. There is a PDF that will talk about the time, date, and place, and I'll make sure that my colleagues get that for their newsletters as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for all that you do.
Hope to see you on the 16th.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appeals, we have requests for a waiver of the noise ordinance on March 30th in Mardi Gras Park and March 2nd on the Grand Drive.
Some move.
Second. Probably motion to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearing today, today is occurring to fix the cost for securing structure, the structure at 153 Crenshaw Street, and for demolition measures at 2651 and 2653 Hayless Street, 11569 Polk Street, 359 Camel Street, 550 Cedar Avenue, 1458 Cloverleaf Circle North, 456 English Street, 851 Grimes Street, 607 Rickbury Street, 366 St. Charles Street, 1851 Boykin Boulevard, 1101 South Broad Street, 724 Bankhead Place, 162 Lincoln Boulevard, and 431 Winston Hopkins Drive.
Is anyone here that would like to offer any commentary on any of these public hearings, addresses that have been referenced? Yes, ma'am? Good morning.
I'm Ruby Canada Evans, and my property is 1101 South Broad Street. I went up a couple of years ago, it's been about 12, helped my father, and I stayed up there four years past his death, thinking March, next month, he'd be dead, four or five years, and I got stuck up there because my brother tore apart of the house to keep daddy from getting out. I bought the house for my parents, and I couldn't get back in the house. I had a lot of stealing, a lot of people putting trash on the property, sending people down to cut the grass, not cutting it right, not cleaning it. And I got this notice saying I owe you $1,800 for painting and cleaning it off, and it looks good painted and cleaned, but I don't have the money, because I'm stuck up at my parents' house now, and I have wasted money with people breaking in, towed it, water lying loose, I guess whatever they could steal, they were stealing. So, I'm here because of this, and I just found out that they've broken in since this letter came. This is to say that, they said that they secured the property. I didn't get a thing I was supposed to sign to note that, I didn't get this until after January the 18th, this is when it was mailed out, January the 18th.
Mr. Dockenbaugh?
I just want to follow up with the council, David Dockenbaugh, deputy director, municipal enforcement, that yes, there is a mislabeling on the agenda, that this is labeled for demolition, but it was not demolished, it was secured by the city. The property is still there, but we secured it. And that's the notice that you have this morning, is to come down here for the fixing cost resolution of securing the property. The city did go forward and secure it, we did do some painting on the front, and yes, at the time that we saw it, in its entirety, it wasn't open to the public and unsecured, and that's why we went forward to do the work that we did. That has been completed, and that's why we're here today, is to assess the cost of what occurred to the property. And we did send a notice to Ms. Evans, she's the only one listed on our top board, Ms. Ruby Evans, and we did send a notice by certified mail prior to going forward with our return receipt with your signature.
Okay, spoke to the ladies concerning that.
Yes, that's my understanding, that you did have a chance to speak to our staff. However, regretfully, the property was not secured, and the city did go forward and do the work, and that's why we're here today.
What do you, what do you call secure? Because we had windows broken, we had the door, the doors had screwed in and set the nails on all of the windows.
We have the final photographs of the work that we performed, which we see here, which would be making sure that all the doors and windows are secured, that they're painted to match the color of the structure, that the front part of the structure was painted as well, and that's where we're at today.
You fixed the step in the porch, that's what you're saying?
Well, we also cut the grass and took the other blighted issues on the property, that's all rolled up into the.
So, I'm just trying to, Ms. Evans, so what would be your, what would you have us to do today differently?
You will have to allow me to pay this on a monthly basis, because I don't have any money. Otherwise, I would have been in there, had someone was going to fix the porch for me, and I lost his telephone number and his name. So, that was, he was going to charge me $1,200 to do that, but every time I save up enough to do something, I have another bill out for something else.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Vice President.
And I have had several break-ins.
Yeah, pretty much, if I'm mistaken, Mr. David, this is pretty much going to be liens on the property, correct?
That is correct. If the invoice is not paid, it will be the next step, this process of lending. However, you have the ability to reach out to the city. If the costs are fixed today, you will receive a notice from the city, and you can speak to Ms. Kathleen Scott, and she can arrange a payment schedule for the costs that are associated with the security. So, yes, the city will work with you on payments.
Yeah, do have a question, so, Mr. David said they will work with you, with the city will, but is it your plans is to sell the house in the future, or?
I was planning on going back in it, but my brother told me because he tore off the bathroom and the walk-in closet and the sunroom, I could not get that fixed then. I tried to get one of them to come down here with me, get him with me, because he's the one that put the boards on the window. We had, they could met me out there to look at it because somebody had fresh up on the side where they, from a house that they were trying to get cleaned up, and they put it over there. They had been partying on there, a lot of bottles, paid one guy to pay $50 to pick up, he picked up 50 blue beer bottle, and so I paid him like a dollar bottle, I guess, and to clean that off. I had several people go down and cut the grass, some of them left it up by three feet, and some of them, they cut it, but they didn't clean it. And that's like 100 to 150 each time.
Yeah, do appreciate you, your willingness, and like I say, the city is willing to work with you with the payments, payment schedule, but I would like to ask of you, you know, is it possible going forward to try to keep that area up? My goal is to bring that particular area up. The next couple of years, the Tiger Grant is coming through there, and it's going to redo Broad Street, and also, this coming year, we're looking to kick off a redo on Baltimore Street, and all that's leading to the airport, and try to just bring that area up to the best it can be, where we can look like the other side of 65 and everything. So, I do ask, you know, of you, and I understand that it's tight and everything, but if the best thing to do is to sell it, you know, sell it, but I understand you might want to move back in because that-
We had put it, tried to plug it once, and the salesperson from the real estate company, I didn't bring those papers to get this information, wanted to put it up for three months, if it didn't sell, he wanted us to pay him $7,000 or $8,000, wanted me to pay him $7,000 or $8,000.
To do, for sale by owner is cheaper, yeah.
So, that wasn't going to work for me.
But that might be something that you're willing to do, because that area, we're trying to bring it up and everything, but we do appreciate your willingness in there. All right, thank you.
Is anyone else that would like to have an opportunity to speak on any of these public hearings? If not, the public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Elizabeth Luther.
Good morning.
There's a lot of new faces since the last time I came here.
So, you've been-
About over 10 plus years or something. I was hiding, working up at the steel mill, you know, so it was a little bit far. Anyway, my name is Elizabeth Luther, and I live at 258 North Claiborne Street, so I live downtown now.
All right.
And I love it downtown. I'll too, I only lived here for a year and a half downtown, most of my life has been spent out in West Mobile, so, but I'm really enjoying my time down here. I walk everywhere, I would have walked here today, but mother nature didn't cooperate with me, so I had to drive, but that's okay. So, here's the thing, in my neighborhood, it is a mixed-use neighborhood. We have a bar, we have coffee shop, we have lawyers and engineers, we have all kinds, mixed within our residence, residential area there in DeTonti Square. And so, what has come up is that we've talked, because there's been some events taking place within our community, our residential area, that have been very disruptive for us, noise-wise. And so, we talked about it, and so I, and I went and pulled up the ordinance, it's in the City of Mobile's ordinance regarding noise in residential areas. The first thing is, a lot of people say, well, you live downtown, so you have Mardi Gras and all those things going on. Yes, we do, but I'm about seven blocks away from that, you know? But what we're talking about is how loud these venues can be. And so, when I was looking at the ordinance, it said that the intent of the city council of the city is to endeavor to provide citizens and environment, an environment free from such access noises, excess noises, and in order to provide for the safety, preserve the health, promote prosperity, and improve the moral order, comfort, and convenience of the inhabitants of the municipality. So then, the reason I have to come here is because we've had some events taking place in our community. I mean, we have some wedding events and things like that, that happened at Richard's DAR house, no issues with them. I mean, they have a harp on the thing, I mean, I can listen to a harp all day long, but it's, we're talking about amplified music, and so that's where it comes to an issue. So, when I read the ordinance, what I didn't read was about how you can come and appeal a noise waiver. And so, I came and I got the application for the waiver, and it tells you have to apply for it two weeks before the event at least, and all those things, but there's nowhere in the ordinance where it says you have to give the courtesy of notifying the residents what you're going to do. And the thing is, is that they'll amplify the music, and they're backed right up to residences, and I'm only a block away from it, and the decibels go up to over 100, because I have an app on my phone where I can hear that, and that's just a little bit too close for comfort. But it would be nice if someone would have given us the courtesy to know that they're going to do the events, so that we can come down here and appeal it, or work with them to say, can you control the volume of what you're to do, or can you not keep your amplified music within your building, not in the parking lot, but actually in the building? And then that one come out and go through our whole community. We have people who work from home, we have people who work at night, sleep during the day. There's just, I mean, when I walk into the courtyard of the building where I live at, at first, I hear it through my walls, and also, just walking out there, you would think they were right at my back door, it's that loud. And I don't understand why they're allowed, that there's not some kind of noise level that can be implemented, that says you have to keep it within the proximity of the event It says here, I mean, in the ordinance, I guess the way it tells you, that if it's at a distance of 50 feet or more from any property line within a residential district, that's where the city can go in and waive it to fill out a form here. So, I'm just going to ask that somehow, that is it not possible that to address where the amplified sound can be contained within the venue, maybe amend this ordinance about the loudness and the decibels that's being projected, and that it can be dialed down somewhat, so that it's only being, the people that are being impacted are the people that are actually at the event? And, I mean, in some ways, I wonder why they can't just do acute acoustic music that's not amplified? That would be nice. So, I was fortunate, you know, as far as that goes, I just don't know what, how we can answer it, and that's why I came to you. Is there some way that you can amend it to give us the consideration of being notified when an event's going to happen in our neighborhood where they plan to do amplified music? Is that possible?
First off, Elizabeth Luther, thank you for coming down, and thank you for investing in downtown. I don't blame you, it's a great place to live, and I'm hopeful that as time goes by, we'll get even more residential density in the downtown quarter. From a logistical standpoint, it would be somewhat difficult to notify each and every person impacted by an application for a noise waiver application. I don't recall a whole bunch of history in the Tonti Square area. You know, in downtown proper, yes, Dolphin Street, things of that nature, we get a considerable amount of requests for the waivers, but in the DeTonti Square area, I'm not really recalling a whole bunch of requests as of late. So, what I would suggest, you have a very active neighborhood association.
Yeah, and I'm not speaking on their behalf.
I understand.
I want that clear.
Yes, ma'am. You have a very active neighborhood association. I've been able to work with them and the leadership of the organization to mitigate issues in the past. If, what I would suggest we do is myself, along with you, and maybe Sarah Bond and Steel and some others from this organization, meet with some of those, some of the entities that are being out, so hopefully that they can self-control and make certain that the issues that you're experiencing, these one-offs that are happening in DeTonti Square, they probably aren't aware that that is a concern, and once we bring the concern to their attention, they'll be able to address it themselves. So, I think that would be our first, as opposed to wholesale change in the ordinance, because it's probably some venue owners who aren't aware that you are having concerns, and once those issues are brought to their attention, they've been very, very, very responsive in the past, and I'm hopeful that they be responsive once they know that you have a concern.
Okay, I can work with that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem, thank you for coming down.
Resolutions held over. 2112 authorized contract with Youngblood Bay Area Construction Engineering for Dock River Park improvements, Phase 2 renovations and new restroom. 09114, reallocate monies from capital project government street signal improvements to grant fund congestion management project government street from Broad Street to Bankhead Tunnel. 00915, reallocate monies from the stormwater fund to capital project municipal stormwater fees project for the purchase of a vector truck video pipe inspection device and other additional stormwater management activities. 21116, authorized contract with Chris Brewer contracting for Conception Street Road culvert replacement and McNally Park Dredge spoil removal. 21117, authorized contract with Thompson Engineering for 2016 Pago Hillcrest Road resurfacing. 21111, authorized contract of corporate environmental risk management for 2016 Pago Hillcrest Road resurfacing. 1119, authorized contract of H.O. Weaver and Sons for 2016 Pago Hillcrest Road resurfacing. 21120, authorized performance contract with Mobile Botanical Gardens. 21121, authorized performance contract with the Friends of Magnolia Cemetery. So moved.
Second. Probably moves in second, any discussion?
Just very quickly, and I want to make sure, do we need to put in substitute, or is it already in there for the botanical gardens?
It's done.
It's done, okay, that's it then.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 3008123 through 37157.
Motion to suspend the rules for admitting consideration of resolutions, 2123 through 37157.
Probably motion to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
08123, approve item-based bids. 08124, approve purchase orders for the week of January 21st. 31125, authorize a memorandum of understanding and funding agreement with Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation. 4126 and 41138 are fixing the cost to secure the structures at 153 Crenshaw Street and 1101 South Broad Street. 4127, 128, 129, 130, 131, 132, 133, 134, 135, 136, 137, 139, 140, and 141 are fixing the cost of demolition of said structures. 58142, assess cost for removal of Weeds, Weedling Group 1585. 37143, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for the August House on Oshel Road. 37157, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for rock and roll sushi on Oshel Road.
Some move.
Second. Probably motion in second, any discussion?
Just one comment, please.
Mr. Williams?
I want to, first of all, thank the administration for splitting those out. It's my understanding that these purchase orders are available for the general public's view, there's absolutely nothing out of the ordinary, although there are a couple of views that cause a cost to be over 50,000, it's not outside the normal spending, and I'm in favor of both of the purchase order resolutions, thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passed.
CIP resolutions being introduced, 01144 through 21145.
By council rules, these resolutions were nailed for one week.
Resolutions being introduced for the first, 01146 through 31156.
Said resolution by council rules were nailed- Set resolution by council rules, will nail for one week.
As dismissed.
Mr. Davis?
No announcements.
Mrs. Gregor?
No announcements, thank you, sir.
Mr. Small?
Thank you, Vice President, Manzi. We know that many people are questioning, have many questions about the airport relocating and coming to Brooklyfield Commercial Airlines, rather. And we know that looking for a kickoff sometime in May for several, you know, for a commercial airline to be flying out of Brookly. So we're gonna have Mr. Chris Curry come out to Gear Yard Elementary School on Tuesday, March 26th. That will be our spring district meeting for District Three at 6 o'clock PM. Mr. Curry will be there to answer all questions that many citizens do have about the airport, commercial airlines flying out of Brookly Airport. Again, that meeting will be on Tuesday, March 26th at 6 o'clock PM at the Gear Yard Elementary School. And that will be our spring district meeting, first district meeting for this year. Thank you, Vice President.
Mr. Richardson?
All right, yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I will be holding my Crayton Community Meeting on Thursday, February 21st at 6:00 PM in the Dumas West Side Community Center on 26th Mobile Street. Our focus at this meeting will be on jobs. We'll have a number of presenters coming, talking about vacant jobs. So we're asking all our citizens, if you can quite please come, but especially those people who want more information about jobs. Please come out. We're gonna start on time at 6:00 at the Dumas West Side Center. And since we are in, this is African-American Black History Month, I would like to have a comment on that. I'm saying that in 1619, the first African slave arrived in Jamestown, Virginia. And this year marks 400 years since 1619. And I think the evidence that progress since that time has been made is indisputable. The fact that you have three African-Americans on this council here is evidence that we have come a long ways from 1619. However, in 1859, in the Dred Scott decision, we had the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, Roger Tannen, to rule in that case that African-American descendants were born innately inferior to people of other races. And America has not been able to rid herself of that fault of ruling. And I would like to make a brief comment on that for those who may even believe that, that they are a different race from other human beings. To say that animals are classified according to species, for instance, dogs are in a species. And they come in all sizes, all colors. It's their function that determine whether or not they would be a part of that species. Dogs got the bark. See what I'm saying? It doesn't matter how tall they are, how small they are. If they can perform that function, they are considered to be a dog. Same for a cat, a cow, for all other animals. And the main thing about them, they cannot procreate unless they are with a member of their species. There is not but one humanity, and we are all in it. But we're in it, not how tall we are, how short we are, our features, our colors. We're in it because of our function, just like all other animals. If you can stand, if you can walk upright, if you can stalk, laugh, cry, sing, plan, reason, you are in the human race. Proof is, you can only procreate with a member of your race. If you can procreate with the one you're with, that person is in your race. America is a long way from accepting that, but that is in fact, that's my... That's what I want.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Rich?
Thank you very much. I'd like this opportunity to thank everyone who came out to lend a hand, as I like to say, for the hand-print tile bail pound that went on at the Connie Hudson Senior Center, which was a fundraiser. We raised $3,000. That's a lot of hand tiles that were done. And I'd like everyone who volunteered their time to help, especially to the USA Ceramics Department, who will do the firing of the tiles at no cost to the project. It's greatly, greatly appreciated. This will be added to the $4,600 that was raised two years ago. And we are planning to put additional picnic tables around the playground and express and the new splash pad that will be opening, hopefully, weather permitting and also timeline permitting, since it's on construction now sometime in early summer. Also, this coming Tuesday, a week from today, on February 19th, there will be a district meeting, and the topic is the map of Mobile. There'll be planning staff present to go over the proposed changes. And also, I understand, a PowerPoint presentation and handouts to enlighten people on how to use the website, so that you can give feedback. And feedback to this new proposed changes. And our code will be open until March 8th. So I really hope that the district will come out and be part of that, members of the district. And again, that's February 19th at the Connie Hudson Senior Center from 6:30 to 8:00 PM. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
In a pre-council meeting, I made a comment that World War II veteran Ernie Andrus is on his way back to Georgia, having completed his first run across America at the age of, completing it at the age of 93. He has become bored in the last two years, and is on his way back to Georgia to run from Georgia, the Atlantic Ocean, back to San Diego. He hopes to complete that before he is 100 years old. He is, he's staying with me while he's in Mobile this time, and preparing for his upcoming run. He does what he calls training legs in his favorite cities, Mobile being one of them. And he will run tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. Don't alarm anyone, but it's over five miles. And it will only be at the pace that he runs. He leads all of these training runs and his regular runs. And I will assure you that you will be able to drink your coffee. You will be able to drink your coffee, listen to your favorite music, and carry on a conversation with whoever you choose to walk with tomorrow. And it will start at approximately 9:00 AM. At 3751 Government, that is near Ken's Cartoon or the Waffle House on the southwest side of I-65 and Highway 90. I'm doing my best right now to get that off of Facebook, but it's under Ernest Andrus on Facebook, and I will try to send it out to the media. I would appreciate anyone that is available to come out and greet the World War II veteran as he passes through our city and prepares for his final run across America. And we will, we will see him again in approximately a year. He said in two weeks from today, he will be able to tell us the time and the day that he will arrive again in Mobile, Alabama, as he makes his trek across the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. On yesterday, I had the opportunity to participate in the groundbreaking ceremony for the Dr. Lani G. Johnson Educational Company Williamson High School. Williamson is embarking upon starting the first robotics program in this part of our state that's officially associated with the Alabama Robotics Association. I had an opportunity to participate with Mr. Johnson and the new school superintendent, our school board commissioner. It'll be about a 12,000-square-foot facility that will really go a long way toward advancing the academic rigor there at Williamson High School. So was proud to participate in that. We're also working with Aldott to schedule a committee meeting in the Plateau Community. It'll be held there at the Union Baptist Church. We'll have those dates and specifics next week. But they want to make certain that as they prepare for this bridge, that they've taken into consideration all of the community feedback from all areas that will be impacted by the, both the, the building of the bridge and also the traffic that have to be redeployed, as this will be a toll bridge, and there will be those who will want to avoid the toll. And Africa Town community and that Africa Town bridge will probably be that result. And so we'll have that date and time. I'm sure Ms. Fairley has it, but I'll announce it on next week. Any other announcements or comments from the council? Anything from the administration? If not, do we hear motion? Public move to second, and we would dismiss. All in favor?
Aye.
Means adjourned.